Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our October twentieth council meeting. Our first order of business is a call to order and the rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Item number two on the agenda is the reading of our sunshine statement and roll call by our municipal clerk, Mrs. Lawrence Stats.
This meeting of the Denellen Borough Council is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of October twentieth, twenty twenty five was included in a list of meetings that was advertised in the Courier on January ninth, twenty twenty five, and as a teleconference was noticed on the official Denellen website on October seventeenth, twenty twenty five, on the public bulletin board on North Avenue on October seventeenth, twenty twenty five, and has remained continuously posted as the required notice. Mayor Solento?
Present.
Council President Sigmund?
Here.
Mrs. Albertson?
Here.
Mrs. Lance?
Here.
Mrs. Rios?
Here.
And Mr. Scott?
Here.
Okay, um, next is a nomination of candidate. We have resolution three fifty eight. Um, it's a resolution to nominate a candidate to replace Harold Vandermark on the Denellen Borough Council. Uh, so before I ask, uh, what I'll do is I'll read through the resolution, then ask for a formal motion and second on one of the three individuals' names. We'll take a roll call on who was first motioned and second. If we don't have a majority, we'll move on to the, to, uh, one of the other individuals that might be motioned or seconded at that time. So. Is, am, am I correct? I'm able to do it that way? Okay, so resolution three fifty eight, a resolution to nominate a candidate to replace Harold Vandermark on the Denellen Borough Council. Whereas Harold Vandermark passed away on October second, two thousand twenty five, which create a vacancy in the position of council member for the borough of Denellen. And whereas the Republican Municipal Committee has presented to the Denellen Borough Council the names of three eligible persons to fill the vacancy. And whereas the three persons are David Denaply, Sherry Muhaw, and Elizabeth Vandermark. And whereas by motion and second blank has been presented to the council for nomination and council vote. So at this moment in time, I will ask ask for a motion based on one of the three names, followed by a second if there wasn't, if there is one on the floor. So do we have a motion on one of the said?
Motion to, uh, choose Elizabeth Vandermark.
Is there a second to that name? Second? Okay, let's take a roll call.
Albertson?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
Mr. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Okay, so it sounds like it's unanimous, so therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council for the borough of Denellen that Elizabeth Vandermark will be selected to fill the vacancy of the council seat held by her late husband Harold Vandermark. Said term to expire on December thirty first, two thousand twenty six. Congratulations, Elizabeth, councilwoman to be, uh, once she is sworn in. So, thank you. Any other business on this item that we have to do?
I know that fulfills the requirements of, so the vacancy that has been taken care of.
Okay, thank you. Item number four on the agenda is the approval of our meeting minutes. Can I have a motion second on the regular meeting minutes of October sixth, two thousand twenty five?
Move it. Sigmund?
Second, Rios?
Are there any comments, additions or redactions to the meeting minutes as they currently stand? Without hearing any, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Item number five on the agenda is resolutions three fifty nine through three sixty one. I'm gonna hand the floor over to Mrs. Lawrence Stats to read them out and give the mayor and council an opportunity to, uh, make comments or ask any questions.
Resolution number three fifty nine is to pay the bills.
Move it. Sigmund?
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution three sixty is authorizing the memorandum of understanding for the use of specialized equipment for the twenty twenty six calendar year.
Move it. Sigmund?
Second, Rios?
Uh, I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, I just wanted a little bit more information about what this exactly, um, was about. What would be specialized equipment specifically?
It's for O E M and the police to use equipment from Middlesex County, basically that we don't have here, that they could just borrow.
Okay, so it could be any equipment?
Yeah, that Middlesex County has, that we don't.
Okay.
If you want, I could send you over the agreement, but that's just a short.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll take a roll. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution three sixty one is authorizing a request to extend N J D O T municipal aid fiscal year twenty twenty four, Second Street Improvement Phase Two.
Move it. Sigmund?
Second, Rios?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Hey, item number six on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have resolutions three sixty two through three sixty six. If council can just take a few moments to review and then let us know if there's any, uh, resolution specific you would like to pull. And we'll speak about them and then we'll vote, uh, for the remainder, uh, together as consent agenda. Okay, without hearing any, can I have a motion and a second on three sixty two through three sixty six?
Move it. Albertson?
Second. Sigmund?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Sorry, I realized that's supposed to be a roll call, but that's technically a roll call, is it not? Any abstentions? Sorry, if you want to do it formally, I, I don't know why I was towards.
Should we do that, Bill? I think should be, uh.
Yeah, do individual roll call. Wow. Sixteen years, I liked on that one.
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Okay. Item number seven on the agenda is council reports. Uh, Councilwoman Albertson, anything to report this evening?
No report today. Thank you.
Wow, go play the lottery this evening. Councilwoman Rios?
Of course. Buildings and grounds report. Uh, the borough recently received a fire inspection certificate approval from the fire marshal for both the field house and the senior center. All borough buildings have now successfully completed their fire inspections. County Court free re- pre- review. Middlesex County Court Administration conducted a security review of courtroom operations with court administrator Denise Donato, Captain Benders, Judge Howes, and Alex Miller. The county was satisfied with the current procedures. Uh, maintenance, town plumbing replaced gaskets on two toilets in the library bathroom. Parsa report. Parsa will be assisting with a sewer-related calls while the borough's jetback truck is out of service for transmission repairs. The Board of Ed, the next Board of Ed meeting will be held on November eighteenth at seven P M. There will be no school on uh, November sixth and seventh for teacher conferences. And Faber Elementary will have an early dismissal on November eleventh and twelve. The Denellen Public Library, uh, join us October twenty ninth at three thirty P M for the Denellen Public Library Party, Halloween Party. Enjoy crafts, storytime games, and of course candy. Every Saturday at ten thirty A M, join us for musical storytime. Visit the library's website for more activities and events happening throughout the month. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Lance?
Okay, so for recreation, the Halloween parade is scheduled for this Sunday, October twenty sixth. The route will remain the same as last year. Registration will begin at twelve P M in the library parking lot with the parade kicking off at one P M, marching towards Washington Park. And Denellen is turning another year old, so join us for Founder's Day this Sunday, October twenty sixth, at Washington Park from twelve P M to four P M. This event will celebrate the rich history of our Miracle Mile. It promises to be a community-wide celebration that unites residents and visitors in a festive atmosphere to honor our town's heritage. Founder's Day will showcase local vendors, live performances, children's activities, and more. Come join us this Sunday for a day of fun for everyone.
That's it?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Council President Sigmund?
Uh, yes, I just want to take a moment to actually, uh, thank all of the volunteers that helped put on all of these wonderful events. There's Harvest Fest that although there was a storm, uh, there was still a lot of volunteer hours that went into making that successful. And thank you to, uh, Kelly and the Founder's Day, uh, staff for accepting some of those vendors uh, into their event. Uh, and the Haunted Trail, uh, was another amazing event, also sort of, uh, encumbered by the weather. Uh, but there's just so many volunteers, uh, that go in, uh, put all the hours into making these events wonderful, and I just want to say thank you to them.
Okay.
And that's it.
Hey, thank you, Council President. Councilman Scott?
The D P W con- continues to clean the downtown area parks and properties. Continue the weekly lawn and landscape maintenance, parks and properties, and including leaf pickup now. Uh, they walk the streams to ensure there's no blockages and check the headwalls. Watered the trees downtown, cleared the catch basin lids throughout the borough. Prepared the park for the haunted trail, and they started leafbag pickup throughout the borough. They serviced the police fleet, D P W fleets, as they came due for maintenance and breakdowns and started winter prep, equipment preparation. And please note that although curbside branch pickup has ended for the year, you can still bring your branches down to the public works yard, and that's my report.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Uh, my report's pretty short tonight, too. Uh, for Jackson Avenue Mill and pave project, the enhanced striping that was originally scheduled for completion today has been delayed due to overnight rain. It has now been rescheduled for completion on Wednesday, October twenty second. Uh, the Second Street Phase Two, which is Madison to Washington. Um, the project, like Phase One, will include removal and replacement of severely damaged curbing and sidewalks, milling and paving of the roadway, uh, removal of replacement of select trees as needed, installation of hand striping and speed radar signs. Uh, the bidding process will begin later this month with a bid opening scheduled for mid-November. C M E, who is our, our engineer, will then provide recommendations to the borough and the bid award is expected to be this December. More Craft Park, um, just want to note that Recreation Director Kelly Cedar will meet with the installer from M R C Recreation tomorrow morning at More Craft Park to review plans for the installation of new playground addition, so good work there, Miss Cedar. Um, this is also, uh, due to the funding that we receive through community benefits from Five Twenty Six Metro Park. They donated over fifty thousand dollars to park enhancements to More Craft Park, so um, it's benefit to what redevelopment is doing in Denellen. Our engineers report, uh, Washington Avenue Street Lighting, uh, they received electrical plans from N J D O T confirming that the department does not own the illuminated signal sign. Uh, the one that says, uh, do not, you know, um, what does it say? Stop here on red. Uh, the borough plans replace it with a standard do not block driveway sign. Uh, notice to proceed has been issued to the contractor and C M E's requested the project schedule emphasizing the borough's urgency. Um, if you remember, these are the street decorative street lights along Washington Avenue, completing them by the bridge and also up by Saint John's Park and Washington Memorial Park. Um, Bound Brook Road Streetscape Project, um, C M E engineers, similar, it's with the decorative lighting that we got a grant for, uh, is reviewing existing utility locations and obstructions to identify potential areas for light installation, especially where P S E N G has raised objections. There are certain locations along Bound Brook Road on Route twenty eight in which driveways are more extended, uh, width wise for ingress egress. And so just, um, C M E has to go back and do better coordination and planning to see where those poles should go. Uh, so more update on that in the near future. So out of that, that's it for me tonight on my report. Okay. Item number eight on the agenda is council discussion. We have two items this evening. First up is best practices inventory, which will be presented by our municipal clerk, Mrs. Lawrence Stats.
Each year, the Department of Community Affairs disseminates a best practices inventory and distributes it to all of five hundred and sixty-four municipalities. It is designed to obtain vital information about the status of municipal government practices in New Jersey. The inventory assesses each municipality's compliance with various laws and evaluates the implementation of fiscal and operational best practices. The inventory is regarded as one way taxpayers can evaluate their municipality's performance. This year, there were a total of seventy questions, fifty scored, and twenty unscored questions on a survey format. Four questions in the unscored category are divided into multiple subparts to better facilitate data tabulation. Some of the topics this year were budgeting, capital projects, emergency services, ethics, financial, financial administration, insurance, lead remediation, personnel procurement, shared services, utilities, and compliance with the filing the annual financial disclosure statements and information that must be on our website. The state can withhold some of our discretionary aid if we do not answer a sufficient amount of questions correctly. This year, we needed a score of at least thirty-two, and we received a score of forty. Thus, we received full funding. Yep, and everybody got a copy of best practices.
Thank you. Good work, team. Okie dokie. Uh, next up on our council discussion is consideration of alternate side street parking on South Madison Avenue between Lehigh Avenue and Center Street during school hours, and the Councilwoman Lance provided, uh, some, uh, information on that for, uh.
For our consideration. So, um, floor is yours.
Yeah, so I'll just read what the request, um, states. It says, the request pertains to observe traffic congestion and safety concerns during school drop-off and pickup times on South Madison Ave between Lehigh Ave and Center Street. The roadway becomes significantly narrowed when vehicles are parked on both sides, creating unsafe conditions for both motorists and pedestrians, especially given the absence of sidewalks in this area, which forces pedestrians to walk in the middle of the street, um, to get to school. So during school hours, approximately seven thirty A M to eight thirty A M, and then again two thirty P M to three thirty P M on school days, South Madison Ave between Lehigh and and Center, um, Street experienced that heavy vehicle, um, and pedestrian activity. And again, um, currently as it stands with parking on both sides of the street, it limited, it limits the roadway width. Um, it reduces visibility and creates unsafe walking conditions for families walking to school. So, um, I'm requesting that we, uh, consider alternate side parking to alleviate the congestion, improve traffic flow, and enhance pedestrian safety along, um, the school access route. And working together with the parking authority, maybe, um, providing temporary signage or pilot enforcement during school times to set effectiveness before permanent implementation.
Well, I think something with that would be difficult to pilot because you can't enforce something that's not on, on ordinance or on the books. So piloting a program like that would might be a little difficult. But in terms of, uh, law enforcement, hearing the proposal, um, any thoughts from your perspective, or you want to sit on it and think about it?
Well, this would be specifically between Lehigh and Center, meaning that between Lehigh and Walnut, there's significant parking. And the roadway is wider, which means that it would be easier to park on both sides of that street. Um, I mean, I've walked in the middle of the street with headlights like two feet in front of me. Between Lehigh and Walnut? No, most of them park between South Madison, Le- I'm sorry, between Lehigh and Center because it's closer to Lehigh, which then brings them over to Faber. But they could do the same exact thing, just on the other side between Lehigh and Walnut. I just don't think that they're using enough of that street parking as much as they are on the other side. Right, just because it's closer. Well, I propose that, um, first, I walk through the neighborhood, um, just between those areas, between Lehigh and, um, Center, just to see what the residents would think of that first. Um, because I know that some residents are parking their cars on the street, so that could also be an inconvenience to them, and I want to acknowledge that. Um, and that's where that would go, at least for first step.
I think a secondary step would have to be the consideration of residents that live between Lehigh and Walnut, who now will have cars in front of their house that they're not used to having.
Right.
Um, I, uh, as I, I did see your email come in earlier, um, I did suggest if capital allows us to maybe get an estimate of what a sidewalk system would be on one of the sides of the, of the street there. Um, so I think that might be, uh, so long as capital allows for it, uh, a long-term plan for us.
That would be a better alternative.
I tend to agree with you. It's just, it's sometimes the more expensive route. So, uh, Mr. Miller, if you can just check with uh, just an estimate somehow, some way, even if it's just a sidewalk system to start in one year between Lehigh and Center. Um, I'm assuming it would probably be, if you're looking on it, um, the side of what favors on for South Madison, just because that would make more sense. You're not gonna have people cross the street this way to then come this way to come right across again. So.
Yeah.
That's true, because I know along on that side, there's a lot of re- uh, retainer walls, and there's one that's up on a hill, so there's engineering that has to go into play. Yeah.
I mean, even if it was for a smaller portion, right, it doesn't have to run along the whole side of South Madison, but even extending, say, fifty feet from the corner would then, um, give pedestrians an alternate way to walk as opposed to walking right into the street.
Yeah, we would just have to think about, is, does that allow strategically to just create a sidewalk system and that the town puts in and then just stop midway?
Uh, I, I, you, you can do it in segments, uh, as part of the plan, and that's why it would have to continue on.
Yeah, let's start there. I, I think that's a good starting point.
Yeah. Have we ever done a traffic study, like a true pedestrian traffic study?
Well, we're gonna be underneath the safe routes for all.
Okay.
Which, that grant, which should be onboarding soon, um, does a whole borough-wide system-wide, where we don't have sidewalks, where sidewalks can be suggested. And it's an assessment and action plan that then could be implemented into an overall capital improvement plan in which we can start going after some grants that would assist in it. Yeah. So, I mean, if we're okay to wait a little while, that would be a, we can use that as part of the scope of it, but you're probably looking a year or two out on the overall
Yeah, def-
analysis and then overall implementation.
I mean, I, I agree with Chrisall. It definitely needs to be looked at. Obviously, my house is right there.
Yeah.
It definitely is an issue there, but I, I don't know if there is a solution. It's.
I do agree with you. Yes. We've discussed that as well, Alex and I off the record, yeah.
That's why I was, well, I don't know.
Yeah. I think.
Yeah. That, like, ideal.
Yeah.
So, situation because cutting off somebody from park, and then also you have to remember, you have to remember, oh, I can't talk about this by giving that park or they're like, we move where we can think, not even that. I've had other residents come up to me and say, hey, it sounds one piece, people really want on one side, it's getting even started for other groups, I do.
Well, I mean, now that you mentioned Columbia, yes, that is also a problem, too. Um, I'm, I, I I don't want to work with, you know, ideals because really the ideal situation would be what was suggested, but I'm looking for something that could possibly be implemented on our side. And again, I'm talking about using what we already have. We already have the space. I know that we have the space. I see it. The road is wider in that section, and it's just about navigating the eight cars. Just the eight cars that park right there by the corner that make it so narrow that it becomes just, uh, wide enough for one car to go through and barely wide enough for a car and a pedestrian to be going on the same street at the same time. So I'm talking about working with what we already have. That's all.
No, I understand. I'm also trying to picture enforcement of it as well, because you have already Parking Authority now at the elementary school. You have officers trying to guide traffic. Who's now on South Madison to ensure that that's being enforced. So the, I mean, it, I think the root of the issue is legitimate, and we have to have a serious conversation around that. I think we do have plans to assess it based upon the grant that we got for Safe Routes for All Boroughwide. Um, we can't pilot a program because it needs to be done by ordinance, because we can't enforce a pilot. And, um, I, I, I do tend to agree with Councilwoman Rios, is that the school needs to be buying into this, whether it's creating an alternate around towards, uh, Hall Street, up on, towards Center, or thinking about, uh, staggered school start and end. I think that honestly would solve it all. Um, so that honestly, I think that alone would solve it all. The staggered start and end time.
Yeah, I mean, the reason they park like they do on South Madison is, I mean, I'm trying to go home. I've been stuck in traffic on uh, High Street, twenty minutes, just trying to get to my house.
Walnut Street right before you turn the page, you know exactly what your issues are.
I, I think the traffic study, yeah, I think this traffic study will give us the true counts, will give us the options, give us what space we have. I think that's gonna be the key in getting a school involved.
But still get the estimate for the sidewalk. I, I'd be curious. I think we're all curious to know what that price would be. Yeah. And maybe it's something because this is caused by the school that if it's, say, it's a hundred thousand, we put up fifty, we ask that they put up fifty. We've shared service, we did a shared service on the sidewalk system up to Pulaski Street, so something to consider. So, if a sidewalk was part of the grant application the last time around, it, it would have been installed, but it wasn't a part of the grant application, so we're not able to do anything beyond the grant. So, but, uh, it doesn't mean that the problem still doesn't exist. So, I appreciate you bringing it up tonight. Anything else on this discussion? Okay, so we've copied notes. We have a few action items that, uh, hopefully for the end of the year, we can come back with some updates as a team. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Moving on to item nine, uh, department heads, uh, let's start over there in I T. Are you I T-ing?
Yes, I am.
Everything's working?
Everything's working.
Okay. Okay. Legal?
Uh, no, department. Thank you.
Okay. Clerk, registrar's office?
Sure, just a little bit, the same thing I do every meeting, Districts one and two, Senior Center, Districts three and six, the Firehouse, and Districts four and five, the Library. Districts three and six, the Firehouse, and Districts four and five, the Library.
Okay, thank you. Administration, DPW? Recreation? No report? Nothing? Okay, P D? Okay, I don't see O E M. Or, uh, Rescue Squad unless they're online.
No.
Okie dokie. Uh, next up is item number ten on the agenda, public comments. We ask that members of the public state their name and their residency, whether you're here in person or online. And I mean virtually online, not on Facebook. Okay, nothing. Uh, item number eleven is adjournment. We have resolution three sixty seven. And before we do that, our next council meeting is on November third at seven P M. In these chambers, or you can join virtually. Can I have a motion and second on resolution three sixty seven?
Move it. Sigmund?
Second, Scott.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, good night, everyone.